Good evening, thank you very much. And I think the next item should be to confirm the Vice-Chairman. Will members confirm Wyatt Ramsdale, councillor Wyatt Ramsdale as the Vice-Chairman? Thank you very much, if you'd like to come up for it. Yes, I did find it. Item three, the minutes of the meeting held on 19th of March 2018. I have attached the committee papers and have been on the table. Will you please confirm the minutes as correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Item four, apologies for absence and substitutions. Fiona, have we received any apologies?
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillor Dennis Lee and councillor Nazir, who is substituting this evening.
Thank you very much. Welcome to councillor Nazir. Declarations of interests. Fiona, are there any declarations of interests received in advance of the meeting?
None received, Chairman.
And members, any that you wish to declare now? No, thank you very much. Questions by members of the public? Have we received any, Fiona?
None, Chairman.
Thank you. Questions from members?
None.
And item eight on the agenda. Just before we start that, we have got a slight change to the membership of the committee. I think councillor Dennis Lee has effectively taken councillor Anna James's place. I welcome him, but he's not able to make it this evening, I understand. Councillor Ross Welland has taken councillor Stephen Hill's place. But I think apart from that, I thank the Conservative Group for giving us a good amount of continuity with all the other members. Very useful because we've got the waste recycling and street cleaning contract on the agenda. Now, you're aware that it's all on pink papers. And I'm going to ask that we move that to the end of our agenda, for the sake of the webcast and anybody at home, because obviously we'll be switching off at that point. It is all in ex ante, all of that item. So if I can just ask for your agreement that we move... You see, I didn't swat up on this in advance of the numbering of the committee. Item 10, and we will move that to after item 13. So it's after item 14, the exclusion of press and public. Is that agreed? Thank you. Okay. If I can ask you, please, to turn to pages 15 to 18 of your report. And I would like to invite Elizabeth Sims to introduce the report on the Environment Corporate Priorities Update. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, this is a summary of the key, mainly planning issues which are related to the Environment Corporate Priorities. This follows the pattern of an update that was given to this committee throughout last year. And the projects essentially remain the same at present. It is, as set out in the agenda, but Chairman, with your indulgence, are a few updates to these items since the publication of the agenda which I thought might be helpful. On item one, the Local Plan Part One, the report says the plan is subject to three legal challenges. There is now a court date in place of the 12th of July. And that will be when the two challenges from POW and CPRE to the local plan will be considered. And also the challenge to the Dunsfold Secretary of State decision. There is a separate challenge by Mr and Mrs House in respect of the Milford Golf Course strategic allocation. And that is not being held on that day. Moving on, page 16. I summarise there the position in relation to Local Plan Part Two, preferred options consultation. As the report indicates, the consultation is going to run until the 9th of July. Just to rehearse that, we have been carrying out some dedicated consultation events as part of the consultation. We've had a parish and town council event, drop-in sessions across the borough. And we've had discussions with the four main settlements and indeed with Elstir and Whitley Parish councils in respect of the allocation of sites which Local Plan Part Two is doing for those parishes and towns as they've asked Waverley to do it for them. The plan, it all goes well to government at the beginning of next year. In relation to neighbourhood plans, which is the third section of this report, several are progressing well. The Farnham neighbourhood plan is under review, seeking to accommodate the uplift in housing numbers which came out of the adoption of the local plan. And there's a consultation on the Godalming neighbourhood plan. And Cranly and Hazelmeir are also pressing on with their neighbourhood plans. In relation to SIL, the report indicates that examination hearings are expected to be taking place in July. We now have a date of the 17th of July, which may carry over to the 18th of July for the SIL examination. The council will be represented at that hearing, at examination, by our consultants, Three Dragons. They are the consultants who prepared the viability basis for the draft charging schedule which will be under examination. Dunsfold Park, Section Five, again, is subject to a legal challenge which, as I said before, is going to be held on the 12th of July. And I think, Chairman, that's all my updates. Otherwise, the report is for noting, the recommendation is that the committee notes the progress on these priorities, considers whether there are matters in relation to these that they would like to add to the committee forward programme, ensuring that the purpose for scrutiny is clearly defined in any proposal passes the work programme selection criteria flow chart. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much indeed, Elizabeth. That was short and sweet, excellent. Members, there are individual items here. I don't know whether you'd like to just pick on anything you'd like to speak to or whether you want me to run through them quickly individually. Maurice, where are you standing?
Well, it was on the issue of neighbourhood plans. I mean, Bramley are working on a neighbourhood plan. Elizabeth hasn't mentioned them at all, us at all. I thought actually we were steaming ahead and ahead of others, but we don't get mention. Now, I don't mind that, as long as it gets through in the right time. But a recognition of the fact that we are working on it. I thought because of the delays that I know Cranly have had over the years, that we've overtaken them perhaps, or it would appear to be. And I'm not quite sure about others, but we are working hard at it. And we are hoping, of our hopes, to actually get it through so that it can actually go to a vote next spring in conjunction with our local elections. So that's what we are working to, and we have a small team of people working forward on that particular basis.
Thank you, councillor Bramley. You do, at the end of paragraph 3.1, get a mention there. The fourth line there says Bramley and Dunsfold, so you are mentioned. But was there a particular question or just wanted to update us that you are working hard on it?
Updating, yes. Agreed that I haven't been mentioned personally, and the other ones have been.
I can understand that. Councillor Foriszewski.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to take this opportunity, if I may, just to express gratitude to the officer in relation to neighbourhood plans, Gail Wotton, who has done a tremendous amount of work. And I have to say, without her engineering and really pushing forward these neighbourhood plans, because I know a lot of them are very much on the back foot, and she's really pushed them to get them to where they are. So I'd just like it on record that I think she's done an excellent job in getting that 13 neighbourhood plans at the forefront of the planning process. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak on any of those items? Elizabeth, would you like to come back?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wonder, now that Part One's adopted and obviously the neighbourhood plans are starting to move forward, whether it would be helpful to you, as part of this update, if we gave a fuller update of where they are in terms of their progress? Because we can do that quite easily as an addendum, it's a matter of fact, as to where they are in status. If members would find that useful, we could do it as an extension of this report to give you more information.
Sorry, I didn't understand that. That must be me. Does everybody else understand? Did you? It was me, I apologise. Could you explain that again, just for my benefit?
Yes, Chairman. Only that, these four paragraphs, obviously, are in summary as to broadly where the neighbourhood plans are. And most have been at the same stage for quite a long time while they were waiting for Part One of the plan to be adopted. As things are starting to move more quickly, there will be quite understandable questions from members about their own plans and their own patches. We could probably produce a schedule which we update for this meeting, which will show precisely where the plans have got to. So you'll have a reference point with more information in it. Would that help?
I agree, that would be very useful. I think all members would appreciate that particularly. And Farnham, of course, is a slightly different position, but with alterations coming on. Can I ask, there are concerns in Farnham. Obviously, we've got the neighbourhood plan coming forwards and the town council is looking for, I think, more SANGs and more sites. But we do have the People Overwind and Sweetman ruling from March, which is obviously going to have an impact. And we're going to need a new or revised avoidance strategy, which is going to dictate presumably what the content of the Farnham neighbourhood plan and, in two or three years' time, perhaps, a review of the local plan as well. What stage are we at with that, can I ask? So that we know what direction Farnham Town Council should be headed? I mean, are we at the moment still in discussion in actual England, I assume, to try and work out? Or do they produce an appropriate assessment, or do we?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's something I'll have to come back to you on. It's certainly a question that has been asked. Of course, the neighbourhood plan will provide for the proportionate allocation from the local plan. The local plan has already been subject to appropriate assessment. So there's one argument that a further prospective assessment won't be necessary. But I think that is being looked at in terms of whether or not a bespoke assessment is needed for the neighbourhood plan. So I can't give a definitive answer, but very happy to come back to you as to where we've got with that advice. Thank you.
Okay. And on the other items, I don't think that we can put them on to the work stream with any intelligence because Dunsfold Park, Brightwell's, CIL are all going through their processes. So, you know, to bring them on to our agenda for another meeting to go in depth would not be appropriate. I don't think certainly at the stage they are. But I think it's useful to have an update on all of them. I'm very pleased, I know it gives the officers more work to do, but it's just keeping us updated. And I think they do a very good job of it, so thank you very much for that. Any further comments from members? Mary.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And I do apologise, I can't let this moment pass without just saying I've got a little bit of a disappointment with regards to Dunsfold Park. And as a corporate responsibility, this council does its best, I believe, in certain aspects to really manage its finances well and look for income generation. And these challenges to the, what has been agreed by the democratic processes, wholeheartedly such a disgraceful waste of money. But unfortunately, I know we have to defend ourselves and robustly we will do that, and the outcome will be the correct one. But I can't help but feel that our residents are being deprived of essential services because we're faced with having to look at these challenges and adhere to them when the democratic process and the Secretary of State approve them. So forgive me for sounding a bit on a downer on this one, but I think as a corporate responsibility we're doing our best and here is a complete needless waste of money. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Air quality updates, item nine. May I please invite Richard Homewood to update the committee on the latest air quality issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. It will be a very brief report, I'm afraid. The police investigation is continuing in terms of the audit report that was referred to the police. We're waiting for the police to come back to see us now. They want to review some more data to complete their investigation. And we will then await the outcome of that. So at this stage, I can't tell you any more than that, I'm afraid, in terms of the investigation as to the historical problems we've had. Looking forward, the new air quality results are on the website now. We've just today received the May results, so they will be up on the website within a week or so. And we'll continue to publish those on a monthly basis. I would give the health warning there that they are raw data, they've not been corrected or adjusted at all. And they may change from that once we have a full year data and we can do some adjustments to them with the bias factors, et cetera. So we are building a new set of data that we're confident in. We've got consultants producing the data, a new laboratory. We've got other consultants doing the monitoring for us. So we're confident that there are a number of independent checks and verifications on the processes now. And we've also got the work continuing with the Farnham Air Quality Steering Working Group, which is meeting on Thursday this week to look at a number of issues moving forward. And then the Air Quality Steering Group is meeting on the 23rd of July. We have a meeting with our consultants this week to review the review of our monitoring site network. And once we've gone through that report with our consultants, we're hoping to take that to the Air Quality Steering Group on the 23rd to give members an overview of the recommendations from that review. I'm pleased to say that, excuse me, with the work on that review, we have worked closely with the Farnham Society and with the Farnham Air Quality Working Group. And colleagues there have participated with our consultants in reviewing the monitoring network. So that, again, is about positive engagement with the community and people with interest in air quality within the community. So looking forward, I'm confident, as I referred to earlier, we can rebuild the credibility of Waverley in terms of its air quality monitoring. And the other thing I touched on previously was we need to look at the National Air Quality Strategy now and how that will impact on the revision of our Air Quality Action Plan, which is a piece of work that we will start shortly. Because I'm pleased to say now that last week our new deputy environmental health manager with a specialism in air quality joined us. And we have another environmental health officer with air quality specialisms with us as well now. So we've virtually filled all the gaps in that service. So we should be able to start some work in earnest now and move things forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Richard. Yes, can you just perhaps expand a little bit more on the National Air Quality Strategy and how that might impact us, or is it too early to say? Don't worry. Members, any comments, anything you'd like to ask, Richard, on air quality going forward? Maurice?
Well, you just asked a question, I presume the answer was, they haven't got an answer for us. What's there in terms of presentation? But I must admit, you know, I... Well, we have problems with air quality. We clearly have had a problem in Farnham for many, many years. And it's never ever been resolved. How long it'll take to become resolved, I don't know. But in the meantime, other places are catching up in terms of the level of traffic. And therefore, there must be a much greater level of pollution here in the middle of Godalming. I mean, I drive out of here at four o'clock this afternoon to go home to do a few things and have my tea before coming out this evening. And there was a queue of traffic all the way around Mead Row and right the way out to, well, Cattershill Lane, I think, or maybe even beyond there, a slow-moving or virtually non-moving traffic. We had the same problem in Bramley at times, so I'm sure lots of other places have it. And it must be a build-up going on. The only one that was ever resolved to some degree was Hindhead because they built a tunnel.
I think actually we are just over the limit, aren't we, in Hindhead still, despite a tunnel? But if you'd like to comment on that. But when you do, I'd also like you, please, to answer the question of, do we have the automatic monitoring figures that could be put on the web as well? Because obviously that would give us some idea of whether the figures that we're getting, the new figures from the new consultants, are going to need much in the way of bias correction. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because the figures, they're going up there dutifully every month, and that's great. But they're pretty meaningless without something... And we don't have to wait a year before we can look at them and say, hey, these really are as bad as we thought they were. So do we have the automatic monitoring figures available as well?
If I can deal with the first point first. Today in Godalming was exceptional. There was a road closure on the Brighton Road, which caused the backlog through the centre of Godalming today. And of course, there is the bridge closure on the road that goes from Farncombe through to, I can't remember the name of it, Billy Compton. So a lot of traffic's coming through Godalming at the moment that wouldn't normally come through Godalming. So that's added to the real problems in Godalming over the last few weeks. I think that bridge closure is until the end of July. But the closure on the Brighton Road today was because of an accident, I believe. So that added to the problems. And we had a message come round this afternoon to say, don't try and go that way because the road's blocked. So two issues together today really caused a major problem in the middle of Godalming. But hopefully that won't be the situation all the time. In terms of the automatic analysers, the Farnham Analyzer is up and running. And we have the data from that, so that can be looked at and see whether we can get that in a format to publish it on the website. The Godalming Automatic Analyzer, as you will recall, was removed by the developers. It was reinstalled by the developers, subsequently found to be damaged and broken. And we've had to replace the whole cabinet and the whole unit. And that work is almost complete. And we're now just sorting out the power supply, which the contractors or developers should have provided for us. And then that one will be up and running again. So we don't have automatic analyzer data from the Godalming site over the last 12 to 18 months because of the development of the new flats and church there and the knock-on effects of that. But certainly the Farnham one, we have data and we'll do what we can to publish that in a recognisable format in the near future.
Thank you very much. Yes, Peter.
Chairman, I thought the Hindhead monitor had gone.
It is no longer an AQMA, but that doesn't mean that it's not monitored. There are still diffusion tubes up by the, what was a crossroads but now double roundabout. And I think there are still exceedances of... But I don't know whether that's exceedance on the annual mean or whether it's just instantaneous exceedances. Richard?
Thank you, Chair. There are still monitoring sites at Hindhead. There are still four diffusion tube sites around the Hindhead crossroads area there. Just looking quickly at the May results, which I have in front of me. One of them exceeded the 40 micrograms, but the other three didn't for May. So there's a bit of fluctuation there. But three were significantly low, in the low to mid twenties. And the other one was in the mid forties, which exceeded the 40. But that's a monthly figure and you have to average them over the year. And correct them, obviously, with the bias factors. There is still potentially an issue there, and we are monitoring it.
Yes, we do. There are, it does appear that we do have exceedances in Hazelmeir and Godalming. We don't know how bad they are until we've got some way of checking the figures out. And with Godalming's automatic monitoring station out of use for a long time, we've got nothing to verify really what our diffusion tubes are telling us there. Then the problems aren't as bad as in Farnham, but they do appear to be increasing. So, you know, we definitely have got to keep an eye on that. And unfortunately, we just don't have the reliable data, sufficient. We've got to wait until we've got some reliable data to go on, unfortunately, I think. But you may beg to differ. But you know what it's like for us trying to get solutions for Farnham? It's taken years to try and get solutions put together, and we're working hard on that because we've got a big problem there. But obviously, the other towns are not forgotten, and I'm certainly keeping an eye on them on your behalf. Okay. Anything further on air quality? Yes, Wyatt.
Something that's changed, and I'm thankful that it's happened, is we've got a new screen up showing us what's been coming up on the TV screen. And we've got in front of us a small screen. One of the advantages of the new technology is it puts the name of the person speaking, if you've put this card into your machine and if you've got your name badge in front. So the two or three of you that haven't, if you wanted to do that, you might get yourself more publicity going forward or be better identified going forward. Officers, maybe there's an opportunity there for you as well, I would think.
It's just to identify the egomaniacs from the shy ones. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on. There's a football match on. Item 10 is the Pre-Government Waste Recycling Street Cleaning Contract. And we're going to move that to the backwards four or five items. So if we move on to item 11, the Performance Management Report for Quarter Four, an annual outturn report for 2017-18, which is on pages 19 to 32 of your documents. If I can invite Nora Coppin, please, to introduce the report. Nora, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. The report presented this evening will concentrate on the key performance indicators and how present the picture for planning and environmental services as well for the fourth quarter of 2017 and 18. And where meaningful, I was also trying to include some annual trends analysis for your information. And we will also ask the committee to review one of the targets for the residual household waste. So looking at the performance in the fourth quarter, the members will be really pleased to know that three, only three indicators performed in red, which is a great improvement over the preceding quarter where five of them were actually underperforming. This concerns the indicator P2 on the page 27. So if we could just turn the agenda to page 27, it's at the bottom of the page. And this concerns the planning appeals allowed out of all planning appeals submitted. This is a cumulative figure. There was a slight increase in the fourth quarter, it wasn't great. And this small increase, we are hoping to see some following trends in the next quarter because there was a lot of work done to improve the decision-making on planning appeals with training sessions held both for the officers and the members as well. The second indicator which performed in red concerns indicator NI191 on the page 30 of the agenda. And that concerns the residual waste for the households. We actually reviewed not only the fourth quarter figures, but also looked at the trends in the past five years and noticed that the indicator has been underperforming since the target has changed in 2013. And there was a programme of introduction of all waste, blue bin. And the officers and the councillors at the time hoped that this initial increase will continue. However, after the novelty worn out, I suppose, the figures returned back to the levels of around 91 kilos per household and remained at such level for the past five years. And this indicator is reflective more of behaviours of our residents rather than the reflection of our contractor's performance. And therefore, the officers would like to propose the change of the target from 85 kilos to 90 kilos, which is closer to the average for the past five years. It is just to say, if members are concerned that we're not going to be monitoring the residual waste anymore, we're not going to be complacent. But as I said, this is an indicator reflective more of the behaviour of our residents. So the officers will be still investing in the campaigns to raise awareness on recycling and food waste as well. There was one more indicator which did not perform well in the fourth quarter. And it's on the page 31, referring to the reject rate, which has increased quite significantly in March 2017 and 18 to 10.29%, which actually obscured the average for that quarter altogether. When the officers looked a little bit closer, it mainly refers to the residual waste which was disposed on the bring sites, which we know is a standard, I suppose, problem with this indicator when the bring sites actually are obscuring the figure of the reject rate as a whole. So there will be work done by the officers to find in the future better ways of measuring which specific bring sites are the ones to blame. And what we can do as well to measure it a bit better, I suppose, and mitigate against the reject rates and the disposal of unwanted waste at the bring sites. So I think that's all on the performance from me. I'll just allow the members to ask any questions.
Thank you very much indeed, Nora. That was short and sweet. Okay. Members, now the first one, if you look at page 20 of your report, paragraphs three to five. to five, the first one that Nora mentioned was a, excuse me, sorry, is a local indicator. It's not one of the national indicators. It's a local indicator where the amount, the number of appeals allowed, as planning appeals allowed, was 41% against a target of 30%. And the officer's position here is that measures have already been put in place to address the performance on appeals. It's in the middle of paragraph six, including additional training for councillors and officers. Now, in respect of that training, where again, paragraph 10 mentions it, if you turn to page 39, it appears that the training it refers to is design. So I would like Elizabeth to perhaps explain what further training there has been because obviously the design issue really isn't much to do with the perhaps potential need for training for councillors and officers in order to reduce the numbers in this local indicator. My own question would be, that 41%, is that made up or to what extent is it made up of officer delegated decisions, JPC decisions, we probably don't come into it actually thinking about it, and area committee decisions? So if I can answer that and then I'll open it up to the floor. Thanks.
Chairman, I don't think we have the breakdown to hand as to the split between officer and delegation, unless Nora has it to hand, no. But we can certainly provide that separately. That is the full suite of all appeals, whether they've arisen from delegated refusals, for which most refusals are delegated, or indeed committee decisions, which would normally be overturns because most applications that come to committee are coming by virtue of call-in or scale and they're therefore normally recommended for approval. So we can provide that information, but I don't think we've actually got it to hand. The second point I think you raised was what the real impact of the training that took place in the spring has been on appeal performance. I think there is a relationship because some of the judgments where officers and members have decided against applications have sometimes been around design and visual impact. And whilst we have very high standards at Waverley and we have a lot of design guidance and a lot of protected areas, it has sometimes been on the finer detail of judgments that inspectors haven't agreed with us. So it was useful to see schemes through the training and also through the coach tour, which had been either allowed on appeal or indeed where the boundaries lie in terms of acceptability, particularly within Spectre. I think more important in the influence on the appeals rate though, has been the adoption of the local plan. And in the last two or three months, we have seen some real benefits in terms of having an adopted plan. And those members of you that are familiar with the Farnham appeals, which were held in abeyance by the Secretary of State pending the adoption of the local plan, it was very gratifying to see that Secretary of State did take into account the primacy of the development plan and dismissed them all. So I think that's been probably the key factor, has been the up-to-date nature of the plan, particularly in relation to the key indicator, which we are performing well against now, which has been this major appeals as a proportion of all decisions. And that's the indicator which we now report regularly to you on the area and joint planning committee agendas. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And of course, with the avoidance strategy and the judgment, the legal ruling in respect of the SPAS, then we're not going to have any bad figures for a long time in respect of quite a lot of the borough, are we? Because they're going to find it very difficult for any appeal to grant a consent, I would imagine. So we're probably doing quite well. But the other figures, to be very fair, the national figures, we're performing very well on and there is no problem whatsoever. There's no danger of us going into special measures or anything like that. I think we can all be very happy and safe. It's just the local one, which would be very nice to be able to meet. Members, I'd like you to please, what do you think of our position in respect of this local measure? I'm not concerned about it particularly. I don't think there's any recommendations I want to put through to the executive. But over to you, members. Okay, if we move on to the next item, the next one, which is, delivery of affordable homes was mentioned. Actually, it's quite useful if you want to look at page 29 of your document. In the middle section on page 29, you can see that there's a split there in the small writing in comments on the right-hand side, tells you where the affordable homes that are listed are and what's been done. So that's just some useful information I point out to you. You might want to pass on to members or pass on to residents to help you answer questions when they do. Now, the next issue of a big red bar is indicator 191 on page 30, which is the waste. And we're being asked particularly if we can reduce that from 85 to 90 or increase it from 85 to 90, to take the pressure off because we haven't ever met that. If you see the bar chart on page 23, lots of thin blue vertical lines. And you can see that in 2013, the text there explains that when we put the new system of recycling in place and food waste collections, the numbers dropped. But we've never actually made any, we've never actually made the target of 85, which was a very tough one. Can I pass, can I please ask the portfolio holder for the environment, Andrew Bolton, to speak on this because he has come along specially and has asked to speak. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Chairman. Members will note recommendation two on page 23, to change the target, which the chairman has already referred to, from 85 to 90. I'd be very grateful for the committee's views. I'm loath to relax targets. I would always like to be aspirational, to keep continuing improvement. But this is why I'd like the committee to consult it. I would remind you, I suspect my fellow councillor is just pointing out, that at the very beginning of the change, we did meet the 85 target. Admittedly, that was some years ago. And it does seem to have gone up a little bit since then. But I'm looking forward to hearing the committee's views. Thank you.
Thank you, members. councillor Forashevsky.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Like my fellow councillor, I'm loath to look at any target that is being reduced. But having said that, I think the target that we set for this particular item is one that on occasion is almost not achievable because the demands on the service, because this service affects every single household in the borough. And you know, whether all sorts of things can happen that can affect the service, it is as it currently stands, an excellent service and most people are extremely happy with it. So whilst I'm reluctant, I think there has to be a little bit of leverage. And I would support that second recommendation, but with a slight reluctance, but an understanding that it's perhaps necessary. Thank you, Chairman.
Peter.
I concur with councillor Forrest's comment there because we've had five years' experience of failure. Therefore, we are not meeting. You know, five years is long enough. I think reluctantly, we should change.
I tend to agree because actually, I think as the officer report does, if I remember correctly, it does explain that we were running at 115, 110 plus and we put in a very, very tight new target for the new system. Not us personally, this was back in 2013, and not me personally, but the new figure, the target of 85 was put in place when we were running much, much higher than that. And then although the new system, when it was introduced, councillor Bolton correctly says we did just manage to make that target but bounced back. It was, everybody was very keen in the first place, but things haven't been maintained quite that well. But I don't see any real problem with changing this. We can always change it again back up. I don't think that anybody should look at this as though, you know, the council can't meet its targets and therefore it's going to make its life easier. I think we need to be realistic. But I would like to ask, perhaps Richard might be able to help, because when we, there was quite a big difference made with the new system. And that was introducing food waste and cardboard and co-mingling at the same time, wasn't it? If I remember correctly, although food waste lagged very slightly on it. I wondered which of those was most effective compared to the source separation? Because my understanding is that the European legislation requires that we have the most effective that is feasible, including financially feasible. But we do have to have the most effective kind. We were told that source separation was much better in terms of reject rates. And of course, that's another one which we indicated we haven't done particularly well on over this three-month period.
Can I assume that a lot of the improvement was the introduction of food waste rather than through the, through changing to co-mingling? Or do we not know? Is that one of those questions you don't want to be asked?
I wasn't here at the time, Chair, but when I introduced a similar system in a previous authority, the reaction of the public always at the beginning is one of enthusiasm and commitment to make the change. And we saw that with the positive increase at the beginning. But people, well, they get bored with it basically and cool off. So there is always a peak when you introduce a new scheme like this, where everyone's really enthusiastic and that enthusiasm wears off after a while. And we do run a number of campaigns throughout the year to try to encourage people to continue recycling. In terms of overall tonnages going up and overall weights per household going up, it also reflects the state of the economy and how much people have available to spend and what their purchasing habits are. And the more prosperous people are and the more disposable income they've got, the more waste they produce. And that's a natural effect as well. So as we came out of the recession and people started to feel more comfortable about spending money, production of waste went up. We have increased food waste recycling. We've just increased it by 48%. We're doing about 400-odd tonnes a month now. Two years ago, it was 200 tonnes a month. So we're recycling a lot more food waste. We are recycling a lot of mixed recyclers, but the reject rate is going up. And of course, all those rejects go back in the residual waste. So if your reject rate goes up, it adds to the weight of the residual waste per household because you just put it back in the residual waste stream. So lots of issues. And as I said to you in the presentation earlier, because China's getting fussier about the types of plastics it will accept now, and because there's all the discussion going on about single-use plastics and other things, we're in a very uncertain time now and there's no guarantee that even with promotion, we will get that figure down to 85. And if it's an unachievable target, it's self-defeating that we come here every quarter and get told off for not achieving the target, when we all know we're never going to get there unless we do some really radical things that cost a lot more money to do.
Thanks, Richard. And you've just touched upon the top of page 31, the other red indicator that we've got is the MRF reject rate, which has increased dramatically, as Andy mentioned this in our presentation earlier on, most of the members were here for that, where we've increased from 4.88% of rejection to 10.29%, which looks quite shocking. Although, you know, we understand that Waverley does have very little control, particularly over the bring sites, as Nora mentioned. Is that a concern to you, Richard, in real life? Or do we wait until we see what comes on, comes at the next, you know, after the next three-month period before we worry about it too much?
I think, Chair, you will see that figure go up more because we have a problem with the bring sites and people contaminating bring sites. And that's been a problem over the last year or so. On top of that, you will now have China saying they'll only accept four types of plastic. It has to be very clean and they'll reject everything else. So our processing plant we deliver the recycling to is becoming more strict about what it will put through the system. So it's rejecting more plastics. And we've got to re-educate the public as to what they can recycle in terms of plastic and what they can't. Well, of course, what that does mean is that if they can't recycle it, it goes back in the black bin as residual waste. So the N191 figure will go up again. So it's a very difficult balancing act to get all this to work properly.
Members, Maurice, you wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, one of our favourite subjects, isn't it? Waste generally. We changed, I understood we'd, I think it was Southwark that we used to send our materials to, and it's now going to a different place. Am I correct? And as that increase in rejection rate changed because of where we're taking the material to, and therefore the new receptor is less understanding or whatever it might be, that's one question. The other question is why it's been rejected in terms of materials. I mean, we hear stories, I mean, for instance, it always frustrates me to say that I can't put my plant pots, the little plastic pots that you buy your small plants in, it's got a recycling symbol on the bottom, why can't they be recycled? But then I hear that black, generally, any form of black plastic is not detectable and therefore it creates a reject situation. And the black trays are, for instance, the ones where you've got microwaveable suppers in a black tray and not usable. And they tell me it's not recyclable. We have a funny situation in our own situation here. We very often use white envelopes that look like paper, which are in fact a plastic. The Tyvek envelopes that you see, if you pick up a Tyvek envelope, it's got its name on the back. If you try to tear that envelope, it will not tear. It is plastic. You can do some wonderful things with a hairdryer and make it all fancy and bubbly and artistic, which my wife loved to do at one stage. It's no damn good for paper. And that's just two little examples. But how do you educate? Well, first of all, we've got to educate our people not by buying Tyvek envelopes because they are increasing the problem. But equally, how do we educate with all the various selected pieces of plastic and how we say, put that in that bin and that in that bin? It's enough trouble getting them to put anything in the blue bin. So a few thoughts. But movement of the sorting, selecting and sorting base, if it's changed, did that change the situation for us?
If I can share the brief answer to that first question, it's no. Because the change in where we take our recycling was 18 months ago, when the reject rate was still coming down, so we were doing quite well. It is purely about the buyers of the plastic and the recycled materials. They dictate the market. And if the Chinese government has introduced new stricter rules on what they'll allow their companies in China to buy from the rest of the world, and they'll only accept four types of plastic. Now, you know as well as I do, there's probably 104 different types of plastic. The petrochemical industry can produce an infinite range of different types of plastic. Your flower pots are what is known as hard plastics and they will not accept hard plastics. So it's not about whether it can be recycled or not, it's whether the buyers will accept it. And that's about how much it costs to recycle it. And hard plastics are more costly to recycle. Coloured plastics are more costly than clear plastics to recycle. So your black food trays, as you rightly say, are rejected by the machinery. And the industry at the moment, the food industry, is looking to move away from black plastics to clear plastics and indeed away from plastics completely to composite cardboard trays. But then there are all sorts of issues of coating those trays in something to stop the food soaking into them. So we've got to educate the food packaging industry, not the public, because, you know, it's the industry that produces this infinite range of packaging, not the public. If the industry only produced four different types of plastic for us to use, we could recycle it all. And likewise with cardboard and envelopes and everything else. If the manufacturers only made certain types, then our recycling life would be a lot simpler. So there's lots of pressure at a national, international level on the packaging industry to change their behaviour. And that's where the big gains will be made, not by encouraging people to separate their recycling into 10 different boxes, which just switches people off and it all goes in the grey bin instead. I don't know if that's answered it in a roundabout way, but that's the reality of where we are at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Now, we're heading towards the recommendations and I'm thinking that what we as a, as a committee, part of our role is to try and help improve things. committee, part of our role is to try and help improve things. We have got problems here with recycling, whatever, it's not our job to do it tonight and solve all the problems, but perhaps it's something that we may need to bring on to our agenda in the future to take another look at. councillor Ramsdale, you wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you Chair. I was intrigued by this issue about the bring sites. Are all the bring sites things that we collect or are some of them collected by the charities that appear on the sides and the supermarkets that appear to put them on their sites, which is my first point. And the second is, is there something we can do about where we take the materials specifically from bring sites? I know, for example, in Farnham, and I think this is true of other community recycling centres, there's a certain amount of recycling done by the people, staff on the site, going through the bags of what would otherwise be destined for the grey bin waste. Could we do that with the containers from the CRCs if they have a high contamination rate and thus turn those high volume containers of material into stuff we can put in the other skips at a CRC? Or does that get too complicated in how the material gets from the bring site to the CRC? Anyway, that's a general question about the CRCs and bring sites that I kind of wanted to raise with you.
If I can, Chair, that's hit on one of the fundamental problems we have with this, the confusion between a CRC, which is a community recycling centre run by the county council, and the bring sites run by the borough council. Now, a community recycling centre run by the county council, people can take recycling, but they can also take residual waste, they can take garden waste, they can take absolutely anything almost that they produce as waste from the home. The bring sites run by the borough council are only intended to receive recyclable products and that means plastic and cans, glass, textiles, small electrical appliances and that's it. The problem we've got is that people treat our bring sites, which are recycling sites, as community recycling centres and think they can dump mattresses there, garden waste and other material that they can't actually leave at our bring sites. And that's why when the lorry comes and picks up the containers from the bring site, takes them off to our processing plant, it's often the whole load's rejected because it's got a mattress in it and lots of other things it shouldn't have in the containers. Now, the challenge was to educate people about the difference between a community recycling centre run by the county council and a bring site run by the borough council. And we've never managed to educate people enough or people just don't care. We've issued a number of fines now, we've got CCTV cameras and we've caught people dragging sofas and mattresses to our recycling bring sites, when quite clearly that's not the place for them. But then the lorries turn up and they dutifully put all that in the lorry and get it rejected at the other end. And one of the proposals that came out of the overview and scrutiny review of our contract was to do away with our bring sites, but I think there was still confusion when we discussed that about what a bring site was and what a community recycling centre was. Because at the moment, we were talking about our new contract allowing for the contractor to collect textiles, shoes and electrical appliances at the curbside, which means there is nothing you need to take to a bring site, that you can legitimately take to a bring site, because it'll all be collected from your doorstep. So we could have done away with our bring sites. But I don't think members clearly understood the difference between the two sorts of sites and that's why we are suffering the problem we've got, because the public either aren't interested in the difference or don't understand it either.
Sorry, Peter, yes, thank you Richard.
Thank you Chairman, I'm sure we'll come on to it when we get to item ten, but one of the problems with the bring sites is that many commercial, a number of commercial operators, shall we say, are using the bring sites to get rid of their commercial waste and that is a big problem. Certainly our bring site I know best is contaminated every day of the week, so let's wait till we get to item ten.
Thank you Peter, yes indeed. Okay, members, anything further that you wish to say in respect of this or can I move on to the recommendations? We are asked to consider the performance figures, which we've done. Firstly, to agree any observations or recommendations about performance and progress towards the targets which it wishes to make to the executive. I don't think that we've got anything useful to, unless you wish to correct me, otherwise, comments to put forward to the executive in respect of these. But secondly, to endorse the proposed target change of residual household waste per household in kilograms, that's a national indicator one nine one, from eighty five kilograms to ninety kilograms and recommend the approval of the target change to the executive effective from quarter one of eighteen nineteen. Is everybody here happy with that we recommend that to the executive? Is that agreed? Wyatt?
I'm very happy that what's proposed to be agreed is agreed. I wondered if we should supplement it with encouraging Richard and his team to go back to the executive and have another look at this confusion between CRCs and bring sites and whether closing the bring sites is something we should revisit. Sorry if that's a bit confused.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether we can get, the confusion's us. So I'm not entirely sure whether that's appropriate, but Richard, if you could answer that, thanks. Sorry, Maurice, did you want to clarify?
Peter's just whispering my ear as well and I'm confused. I mean, the committee that looked at this were very clear and understood the difference. That's why I'm interested to see Wyatt's question, because you know, to me, it was very clear, you know, what we're talking about is there is no confusion, that is sorry, that is Waverley and that's what we've done. So it's clear we have to educate ourselves first and that's amongst all of our colleagues and then, as you say, possibly, probably or whatever, take away the bring sites.
Okay, Peter, did you want to say, add to that or not? No, okay.
No, no, I agree with Maurice, I don't think there's any confusion over bring sites and the rest and the committee were thought quite clear that we had a recommendation on that, but we'll leave that to item ten.
We did, absolutely, yes. Okay, so it's agreed that we are going to endorse the proposed change and councillor Bolton can be happy? Is that, is agreed? Thank you very much indeed and thanks for coming along councillor Bolton. Okay, if we now move on to item twelve, which is our service plans annual out term report. Again, Nora, if I may pass over to you and ask you to introduce the report please, it's on pages thirty three to forty of your committee papers, members.
Thank you very much Chairman. So the report in front of the members concentrates on showing the completion rate of all service plan objectives set for the service areas of planning and environmental services for the year two thousand seventeen and eighteen. The outstanding objectives, we took them out of the main annex report and just presented them in the cavern report, which can be found on the page thirty four and thirty five of the agenda. Out of twenty service plan objectives, four were partially completed, so they are still outstanding and will be carried over and carried out in two thousand seven, in two thousand and eighteen and nineteen and two of them were delayed, one was cancelled and their resources were deployed into another project. I will allow heads of services to address any questions the committee has, but before I move on, I just wanted to mention a few key successes that were achieved also, which was, as Elizabeth mentioned, the adoption of the local plan part one, which will be a great foundation for the year ahead for us to develop the local plan part two as well and secure the developments in the future for the council and also in the environmental services, the introduction of the card and contactless payments in all of the main car parks throughout the borough, which will help our customers and provide the multitude of payment methods to help with their needs and whichever way or method they would like to prefer to pay, we facilitate those to the residents. Also, the strategic review of the options for the future arrangements for the waste contract has been completed and I know there will be further discussions later this evening. So that's all from me and I'll direct any questions to my colleagues.
Thank you very much indeed Nora. Yes, so we've got page thirty seven to page thirty nine, there's three pages which covers all of them and the ones which aren't green are summarised on pages thirty four and thirty five. Yeah, that's how I see it, yes? Yeah, so members, if you've, I don't know whether you've had a chance to look through pages thirty four and thirty five and the ones in the service plans which we haven't completed. Members, your comments please. Mary Farishevsky, thank you.
Thank you Chairman and please correct me if I'm not targeting my comments in the right area. When we look at car parks and the implement of car park improvements, I'm just looking about our corporate priorities, thinking about our corporate priorities again in terms of making our assets work for us and it sounds a bit penny pinching, but it's proven that car parks in Cranley are a third underused and I was wondering what part in all of this when we look at identifying improvements, that it could be looked at or considered that some of the analysis that the department have could possibly look to making some parts of some of the car parks, one in particular that I'm thinking of, where we could offer a different rate to attract people who work in the village and won't park in the car parks because it's too expensive and start to utilise that third that's underused and actually get some income from it. And I don't know whether the data for that would be held in terms of generating interest, but it just seems there's a possible opportunity there to look at some of the stuff that's going on in our car parks and make the best use out of them because whilst they're a third underused, they're not being utilised and they could be by people who work in the village but can't afford to pay the extra parking charges. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Mary, I rather thought that we were solving that by dumping half of the housing need in Cranley so that we can fill the car parks up with lots of new people, but which obviously you support, but. Yes, indeed, I mean, there is some, I can't remember where I saw it, it was probably on page thirty seven or thirty eight or somewhere. Oh, but page thirty seven, yes, the third box down tells us that we've now got forty two thousand returning customers on Ringo, so our car parking electronic payment system seems to be, have been replaced and be quite successful, which is good. But the trial of check-in checkout system, which is pay-on-exit, I think people know that as, which a lot of our residents seem to be quite keen on us bringing in and it was trialled and didn't prove popular in Cranley and I don't think Cranley's that much different to the rest of the town, to the rest of the borough. The take-up of that system's been stopped and we're not doing it, but contactless payment's going very well. I don't think we've got any problem with that, I'm surprised Cranley's got underused car parks and can we ask Richard if there is any vision, if the council has any vision of reducing prices in order to bring people in and use those and bring vitality to the town?
We are committed to reviewing car parking charging strategies across the borough as part of the work we're doing on reviewing our car parking capacity and that work will continue through the next twelve months or so before we bring back a proposed framework for charging during twenty nineteen. But there's a lot of work to do with the parish and town councils before we get to a stage where we can bring proposals forward.
Thank you, can I just ask Elizabeth for, this is on page thirty four, the first of the two boxes, which is, mentions the Riverside Two Car Park Improvement Project, where resurfacing work is to be carried forward to the new financial year twenty eighteen nineteen. I saw a planning application for moving the lampposts a few feet and resurfacing that car park and I think that went through by, it went to offices, I assume it was consented by delegated power some time ago. But when I drove around there, it almost looked as though part of the car park had been resurfaced, perhaps not where the cars parked, but the, has it been done or not?
It has Chair, yes. It was done in eighteen nineteen, so it was done in the last few months, so it was in the current financial year, not last financial year.
Were the lampposts moved?
No, we did a smaller scale refurbishment scheme on it so that it was ready for use before Dogford closed, that was the reason for doing it.
Do we intend to carry out the rest of that, that planning application at some point, because it was actually moving the access road through to the old folks home across the other side of the river. It was moving that road over, wasn't it, and moving the bays about a bit, moving the lights, all sorts of things?
That's the longer term intention, yes.
Okay. Members, any further comments on the service plans, the update? Okay, well, I'm not entirely sure that we're going to be able to say anything useful to help the executive, so. Any comment anybody would like to put forward? I was thinking perhaps on page thirty seven, we've got the top item ES one, objective says that, I just noted on here, update text question mark, perhaps we need an update to that going forwards for some, I don't like that, going forwards. Work started on face two of the project, to progress the three options, yes, that's simply, as you mentioned, actually, we are, we're about to discuss that, but the text will need to be updated if that's going to be brought back to us or go forward to any other committee, because it's slightly out of date now. The, I looked also at ES four, which is on the bottom of that page, introducing environmentally sustainable energy resources for Waverley. I'm not sure, that sort of is very cross-cutting across housing and value for money and the community overview and scrutiny as well as ourselves, but it says here that we were going to put in photovoltaic PV panels on Waverley's sheltered housing units and after further review, the project's considered financially infeasible and discontinued and the capital funding redirected to other projects. There might be a question mark over the decision process there if we're going off doing things which we decide not to do in the end, you know, are we wasting office of time by heading off in these directions? But first, I prefer to know, is this due to a change in the government subsidy or something simple like that?
Quite simply, the government changed feeding tariffs between the initial project proposals and the final evaluation, so it was no longer financially viable to invest the money in it, the return was too long.
Okay, Maurice?
That's an interesting question with regard to PV panels. I put mine in six years, nearly seven years ago, about the same time that we were doing them here, a little bit earlier and the feeding tariffs, as you're saying, because here, with some of ours are commercial and they're for different rates, but nevertheless, I put mine in and very sadly, it works to the standard that was projected. My neighbour over the road about two years ago put in panels, the standards now have changed quite dramatically, the feeding tariffs have changed, they've come down dramatically, but the efficiency rates of those panels appears to me to have gone up by forty percent, as much as that. We did a check on the panels that he got on the side of his house, exactly the same aspect of mine, six panels and I went through it and I gave up, I mean, it's forty percent better and it's all around, the panels themselves getting better and the fact that they now fit micro inverters on each panel, which means that each panel works better on its own. If you've got a bank of, say, twelve panels and the sun goes off of a certain area, it drags the rest of the panels down and none of them perform as well as they could do individually and the new ones work that much better. So I've got a couple of neighbours who've moved to that and they reckon their return on capital is still very good. I'm still very happy with mine, I'm not complaining, I'm just happy to see technology moving on and improving, but it is a massive change and it'd be interesting to know whether our team and whoever's actually understand that change, that improvement that's going on with regard to technology.
Okay, you're getting to confuse me a little bit because I thought you had a problem with your wife using because I thought you had a problem with your wife using the hairdryer to do funny things to plastic envelopes. And she was giving you a... And now you're using all this electricity up...
No, she was only doing that when the sun was shining and therefore the PV panels were working. Because I had difficulty getting it up.
I'm glad to hear it. Because I was worrying she was spending too much time on that and then having to cook your microwave meals in black containers you were telling us about, which you couldn't recycle. But yes, thank you. We do... Yes, there is an improvement in the technology, certainly. And with the feeding tariffs going down, obviously, it's the... People... We had to incentivise people to start doing it years ago, and it was working quite nicely, wasn't it? It's got quite a lot of PV panels put in place. But it's a shame that we didn't manage to get in on that at Waverley then for our sheltered housing schemes. Okay. The other one on page thirty-nine, P4, in respect of infrastructure. And this is something we might want to think about in a little while in respect of what we're going to bring forward to future meetings and put on our agenda. This was to secure adequate infrastructure, support development on applicable applications, et cetera. And it's always a very much a live issue, isn't it, infrastructure? And the planning team has continued to secure appropriate infrastructure improvements via section 106 or in kind by developers. It's the officers' position. Many of the significant developments yet to reach trigger for delivery. The teams work closely with infrastructure providers to secure appropriate for vision and justify requests for infrastructure. That's something where I know a number of residents might beg to differ. They've seen what happened with the Hopfields applications, section 106 agreement being... Having to be changed because of changes in the legal position. And also in Cranley, of course, where there's a lot of building gone on. And it seems that some of the money, which would have been very useful for infrastructure there, isn't... It just simply isn't going to be available. So looking at that, members, you might want to... I don't know whether you want to comment on that now or whether perhaps you want just to bring that forward onto our agenda in future to look at infrastructure and section 106 payments and the rest in general. Any further comments, members?
Sorry, Chairman. I don't quite understand your comment about the 106 money not being available for projects in Cranley. Where's this from?
Well, there is a... It is a general perception that the number of planning applications and developments which have been consented in Cranley over the past few years have missed out, obviously, on CIL. But also haven't the amount of infrastructure contributions which those developments might be expected to have made simply weren't attached to those planning applications. So we're... And that some of them have gone to the wrong places. I hear about playing fields of private schools rather than playing school... For public use and that sort of thing, where section 106 monies aren't... Haven't necessarily perhaps been applied as the public would want them. I think Mary wanted to comment on that, did you?
I would like you to address that question to Mrs Sims, I think, because I'm quite worried.
Yeah, sorry, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I can be very clear that all developments that have been permitted over the... Well, in any event where infrastructure is an issue, have been successful in securing appropriate infrastructure contributions and secure through section 106 agreements. At the point, I think, that you may is... For many of those, the triggers for payment may not have arrived, in which case, at this point in time, because construction hasn't started on some of those schemes, we haven't got the money in. But to be absolutely clear, the appropriate contributions are negotiated, the section 106 agreements are signed, and the contributions are received and at the time of construction. The monitoring of section 106 agreements is being improved. We've just recruited a new section 106 officer. We've been doing some very useful work to improve and enhance our process, a more holistic approach to collection, monitoring and spending. But there can be no doubt that the correct amounts have been negotiated and achieved through section 106, and they have to be spent on the projects in respect of which they're negotiated. It's the law in relation to section 106. So I'd like to be very clear to the meeting, there's no doubt about that at all. I think your point about the fact that some of the Cranley developments have taken place in advance of SIL, that's obviously a fact. SIL couldn't really advance until the local plan had established what the growth is going to be in the plan period and the associated infrastructure needs in the infrastructure delivery plan. And SIL will build on that. And that is just a fact, that some of the developments have had to proceed through section 106. But in relation to the other site in Cranley that you alluded to, there was a change in circumstances, and we've been very clear about that, that because of the change of the pooling restrictions in 2015, where the infrastructure providers had to be much more clear about the projects that they were seeking to spend money on, justified to the development on that particular project at Crondle Lane, the County Education Authority couldn't identify a project, in which case, in terms of being reasonable, the developer, they weren't... The primary school contribution wasn't included within the agreement because they couldn't justify the project. That's the appropriate process. I can't think of any example whereby the process hasn't been really transparent. I think the other question you asked was about Cranley School. Contributions were sought and agreed in relation to use of playing pitches at Cranley School. But the most important point about that, it wasn't just about giving money to a private school, it was about securing public access to Cranley School pitches to facilitate community use of playing pitches. And that was the point, that it was meeting a local need for playing pitch. And that was agreed through the playing pitch strategy. So I hope that's filled those gaps in and given members reassurance about section 106. Thank you, Chairman.
That's very useful information, actually, because I was completely unaware that the contribution to Cranley School was going to make it available to the public. So it's not available at the moment, and that's...
My understanding is, Chairman, that they are advertising use of the pitches commensurate with that contribution that was made for those pitches. But I can double-check that point and send members of the committee the link to that. But that is the expectation in terms of the agreement. It was about facilitating public access to their pitches.
Yes, thanks. And thanks for clarifying. I mean, I was putting across what the public are talking about in the letters pages and, you know, in the discussions that they have. We had a couple of problems with the... And it was a change in the system. I fully appreciate it. Not a criticism of our offices, it was a change in the system whereby we lost out. And I feel Cranley has also lost out through the system, not through what the offices have done. Mary?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And thank you for raising that point so it could be so eloquently explained by Elizabeth Sims. Yeah, there's regrets, but I think we've got to move on. And I think that point made about Cranley School is an important one, although it was done and dusted a long time ago. What I would say, though, in defence of everything that's been said, is when it was first talked about strategic sites in Cranley being developed years ago, not recently, years ago, the public and previous administrations were slow to capitalise on the potential of what may or may not happen. So when we were talking years ago about development coming to Cranley, people were saying it'll never happen, it won't happen, it's not going to happen. And there was a silence amongst the community. And I can remember standing in this chamber, tearing my hair out, thinking, why aren't people up in arms about what's about to happen? But nobody believed it would. And that's when, at that time, because there wasn't the interest, that's how a lot of these 106 contributions were agreed through previous administrations, previous councillors and so forth and so forth. No rights and wrong, it's just what it is and we are where we are. But I think Elizabeth Sims, again, was extremely honest. And when you talked in your presentation about the monitoring, the tracking, which I think is a much more important and relevant to where we are now. We would like to see those contributions come forward so we can see them being spent appropriately and that those monies are coming into our communities and that we are sticking to what we said we would do. And those monies that would seemingly be spent inappropriately are for good public use. So, Chairman, I would wholeheartedly agree with you and say that this is one, based on the information we have, the perceptions from the past and going forward, and Elizabeth's own admission that we need to look at it, the tracking and the monitoring this more carefully. I think this should be on a forward rolling programme for us to scrutinise and track exactly where this money is going, where it can be spent, so it's fair to everybody and anybody. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks. In the private session prior to this meeting, you did mention briefly the new section 106 systems and the new officer. Would you like to repeat that publicly? Just to help... A couple of members weren't here for that, anyway.
Yes, yes, Chairman. We have just appointed a new officer responsible for the monitoring of section 106 agreements. His name is Adam Constantineau. He will be working, reporting to Sarah Wells, who are projects team leader within the planning policy team, and have a specific role for understanding and supporting the section 106 process from end to end. So that will be working with the development management team at the outset in terms of negotiating appropriate contributions, working with the infrastructure providers to identify the contributions, monitoring receipt, and then monitoring spending with the infrastructure providers, including our own internal team, such as Kelvin Mills's team on playing pitches and play spaces. And of course, importantly, the County Education Authority and the County Highway Authority for education and transport. So we're confident that with the structure put in place and this revised revamped system, that there'll be enhanced, better, more transparent monitoring of the process. Thank you, Chairman.
Point, yes.
I find this a very encouraging and interesting debate, and really almost observations from my own experience, both at county as well as here. The good thing about SIL, and the reason why Cranley's been said to be lost out, I think is because SIL's going to be that much higher than we've typically been able to negotiate as a section 106. So Cranley with a series of section 106s is not as much money as it would have been had the same developments been in, say, a year or two's time. The point really, the school losing out is because... Not because our planning department didn't get things right, it's because somebody in Surrey, looking after that school, didn't have a shovel-ready scheme. And with SIL even more money available, but the same requirement that you've got to have specific schemes to justify the money against... And I think you can only have, I think it's five sites contribute to one scheme. What we should all be doing is making sure that in our areas, and I would suggest that you get onto your county councillor for those level services as well as local ones, there are those shovel-ready schemes ready. Something I started doing is when I'm commenting on an application, is saying, I don't support this, I don't want it. But if it has to happen, can we have a section 106 to fund X, Y, Z school or new pedestrian crossing or something? And the other thing, I think, well, I've been to see if I get the right feedback on this, is you can get voluntary section 106 agreements, particularly with developers that are building only small sites. I think it's... If you're building ten, you've got to have one. But if it's less than that, there's no legal requirement. But of course, sometimes these developers do also live in the community, want to get their reputation enhanced. So finding ten K out of the profits in a scheme that will mean the other people in the road, like the fact they've contributed to enhancing a footpath or done something with the school or whatever, also sometimes work. So I've made a habit of trying to have a shopping list of things I want done as the local county councillor, like repairing a footpath. It's a current one I've tried to use a couple of times. And then when I see a planning application that's that road or just round the corner, I ask the officer if they can try and get a voluntary contribution out of the developer for the purposes of goodwill and things. I've succeeded in getting those things written in, but unfortunately, the applications failed. But there's some thoughts for you. But this is absolutely critical, that we make sure that the departments here and at county... And of course, if you're parish councillors, the parish is because they'll get a percentage of the SIL, as much as twenty-five percent if you've got your neighbourhood plan signed, have all got schemes ready to use the money. Don't wait till you know there's money available because the officers don't invent these projects overnight. Thanks.
Thanks. Elizabeth, would you like to just comment or clarify on any of that? Or are you happy to leave that as it stands?
I think that summarises the aspiration really well. I think it is about being ready, planning ahead. And the SIL process is much clearer. And the section 123 list, which you'd be familiar with that term, that is an adjunct to the SIL schedule, demonstrates a sort of things that SIL can be spent on. But in the end, the spending will go through a governance process. And that's actually going through the committee cycle at the moment. It went through value-for-money and customer service, ONS, last week. There will be a much clearer system of allocating the spending of that money. But section 106 will continue for quite a period of time. And I think the point that the councillor Ramsdale's making is this isn't a question of just accepting offers from developers to fund something, to enhance their proposal. It is about a developer recognising the benefits of certain forms of infrastructure to become part of their proposal and offer it up as a clear community benefit, as part of a scheme. So it's transparent, it's up there as part of the development. And if they can argue they're prepared to fund a certain development as part of a proposal, that is for the planning authority to make a judgement on. So I think they were wise words. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Peter, you've...
Yeah, very quickly, come back in, agree with councillor Wat Ramsdale. Because I certainly went in my ward when a planning application was granted and the highways agency had failed to carry out some of the work that they had said they were going to do in their plan, but didn't. The developer has now taken that on board at no cost, no nothing to the council. But it's going to be done and it will improve the whole area. Also, I'd just like to mention that Steppingstone School, which is a very special school, very needy for people. One of the conditions that we applied to that when we granted undershore permission was that the local community would be able to use their facilities once the school finished at four o'clock in the evening. So we do put conditions in on private schools and I think to the benefit of all of us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, let's move on. Unless members want to suggest anything which might be helpful to take forward to the executive from that, I don't think there's anything there particularly that we're that concerned about. If we move on to item thirteen, the final item before we go into exempt, which is...
Do we not need to agree the recommendation?
Sorry?
Do we not need to agree the recommendation?
Well, the recommendation is to agree what we're going to say to the executive, isn't it? Sorry?
Yes, okay.
Yeah. And we're not going to say anything, so we don't need to agree it? Do we agree to not say anything?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item thirteen, committee forward work programme. Yasmin, if you could please run us through this. Sorry, Mary?
Forgive me, Chairman. I missed what was said then. Are we not taking anything forward from this item to executive for comment?
No. Unless you have a comment that you wish to... And you think would be helpful to the executive, then I didn't think that anything had arisen that was important from the committee that we would want to say.
I would say that there is an important message out there, and that is, it's been alluded to this evening. And that is, we all need to have much more forward thinking. It's been alluded to as well tonight, that we must work with our town and parishes more closely. And members also need to recognise that they have a commitment in all of this, that when they're looking at applications, that they are scrutinising them and they aren't asking at the last minute. So that's come out of this discussion tonight. So I think forward thinking, working more closely, exactly all the things that councillor Ramsdale said. I think that the executive need to hear that. Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, other members are happy to send that forward? Just to let the executive know how we feel in respect... And that was particularly in respect of P4, the service area and infrastructure. Okay, thank you very much. And the executives here and the portfolio holder has heard that anyway, and I'm sure he will reiterate it for us that they're appropriate. Thank you. Okay, now, item thirteen, we're back to. Which... Yasmin, please, if you would, introduce the committee forward work programme.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is the usual item on the committee work programme. You'll notice on page forty-two, where the section A begins, this has got the agenda, today's agenda, followed by future potential items. If we look at September, for example, we've got a couple of items on there already. The joint enforcement team jet update summary item and the impact of Surrey County Council recycling centre changes. So that's on there already for September. Other items which I've added in consultation with heads of service include the infrastructure delivery programme and the LGA peer review update, which we've already heard about a little bit this evening. But this is something that came from the Planning Members Reference Group that was set up to help implement the improvement plan for development control. So this will be an update to the committee on how that's going. The infrastructure delivery plan is something I've spoken to Elizabeth a little bit about. We've touched on infrastructure quite a lot this evening. So I'm sure Elizabeth and I would welcome any questions on that item and it'd be good to know from the committee what they'd be expecting in that item. Before I hand over to Elizabeth in case she has any comments on these items, September already has those two substantial items. And if so, if members would like to add anything, which they're very welcome to do as it's their agenda, it might be worth thinking of if something could slip because obviously we want to do the items justice. I'm very happy to receive future suggestions for the items. As you alluded to earlier, Chairman, we had some private presentations from the heads of service earlier this evening. So there were a few items bobbing up there, such as potentially the car parks review or there were some other things that were mentioned about, I don't know, there are several reviews going on from heads of service. So I'm happy to receive suggestions for either scrutiny reviews or future work programme items if the committee has any. But that's it really from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasmin. Yes, you referred, I think you were referring to, earlier we were talking about in the presentation that we had from Richard and Elizabeth, the Wayhill Fairground and deregistration of common land is going to be coming up. And that is something which could possibly come onto our agenda if it was of specific interest. Obviously, it's a hot issue in Hazelmeir, I understand that. I'm not entirely certain where we're going to add value in that. I haven't compared it to our list of, you know, running through our list of... We have on page 53 of selection criteria for over in scrutiny topics. But I would think it probably would, because it's a current issue and I would imagine that that would probably qualify for us if you wanted that on the agenda.
Can you clarify just what is... Could you clarify just what that is you're talking about?
Yes, the fairground and car park is common land in Hazelmeir. It's quite a hot potato because the council is proposing to deregister that common land, provide compensation land up at Sunbrow, which I think some people would question its suitability. And that the deregistration of that common land could lead to development in future. Now, whether the approach being taken by the council to that is good or not, I don't know whether members would want to have a look into that. Do we have any particular interest from Hazelmeir in looking into that? Because it is a local, very much a local issue.
Certainly, I want to see the, almost guarantee that the, should the Hazelmeir design statement and local plan move forward and we find the right developers that should development on that Wayhill Car Park site continue, that it is ring fenced, that we know that there is a guarantee that if the development goes on, parking can be there with accommodation, with shops, with whatever else in the way that Hazelmeir are considering the way forward if the money can be found, if the developer can be found. So I think we need to hear all about it.
Would you like that to be brought on to our committee agenda? So that we can, I mean, obviously, we can't be talking about individual planning applications or anything like that and it's not our job to do it here. But to look at the overall project and the council's intentions as a whole and how they fit in with Hazelmeir's own plans. Would it be appropriate, I should ask Elizabeth, what would and wouldn't be appropriate for us to look at in this respect? If you wouldn't mind?
If I can, yeah. At the moment, there is no planning issue with Wayhill Fairground Car Park. There's no planning application as such for the site at the moment. So as Elizabeth has just said, it's not a planning consideration at the moment. The position at the moment is that the executive some months ago authorized officers to proceed with the proposals for deregistration of the common land. We carried out pre-consultation. We've now submitted the application to the planning inspectorate for deregistration of that common land. We've circulated that application to interested parties. And we await the decision of the planning inspector. Now, people have an opportunity now to make their views known to the planning inspectorate. That's the next stage in the process. The planning inspector will then make a decision on whether to give us authority to dereg, whether he will deregister that land and accept the land swap in its place. We will then, and we've made it clear, that we will then improve the car park as an interim measure and ratify the use of that car park, pending further discussions with interested parties in the Hazelmeir area about the longer term future of that site, along with several other sites in the area through the place shaping discussions in Hazelmeir. And it's at that stage that it will become a planning matter. That is some time ahead. And it's a complex site and there are other sites nearby that are also complex in terms of people's aspirations for future development and the physical practicalities of developing them. But it was quite clear that in the interim, we have to resolve the issues with parking on that site, which is unregulated at the moment. And whatever happens in the long term, we will at some stage have to deregister that land before it can be developed. So the decision was made to take that first step now, apply for deregistration, get that hurdle out of the way, so that when a clear proposal for the long term development of that site comes forward, you won't have that hurdle across at the time. So it's part of a long process, but it is the first stage of clearing the way for longer term proposals for that site to happen.
So perhaps it might be, I mean, we're slightly further forward. If we wanted to know more about that and the executive's intentions and know whether we wanted to look into it in any further depth, perhaps bring it to a January meeting to ask for an update report on it rather than on to our next meeting, is that... Would that be appropriate?
We don't anticipate a decision from the planning inspectorate for some months. So I doubt if it'll be ready for September.
Okay. Okay, we'll leave that to our next meeting then, if that's okay. But we'll keep an eye on it because I know it's a hot potato locally. Mary, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just earlier, I wanted to talk about earlier on, we had two excellent presentations on two different subjects. And they cover, both cover a number of key issues. And taking this forward, I found it very useful, maybe in our working programme, we could have a watered down version of this that just give bullet points based on the information that's there because it's current and been readily updated as we go on. So I think it's very useful to members to find out exactly where we are on a wide range of issues. But if I may, just concentrate for one moment on the key issues with regard environmental services. And it's obviously a subject dear to my heart on page seven. We are looking at the moment of the consultation that has just started and runs to, I believe, the 29th of January. It's the public space protection orders. Waverley is a rural borough and it can't be compared to other districts and counties in this part of the country. And I would like to thank Richard Homewood for his time a few weeks ago when I came to see him with some people who work in the industry who are very concerned about the impact on these. Now, I appreciate as a role in programme, there's not great appetite for this to be here. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to say to officers and to fellow members, the industry that I work in is an unregulated industry and we welcome this. And there's a lot of people working in the pet service industries that would help guide and shape this consultation for the benefit of Waverley as a whole. Because these are the experts, these are the people who are compliant, who are genuine and who are hardworking and whose living depends on it. So I think it's a real opportunity to shape going forward what this consultation is all about. Unfortunately, like a lot of things in life, a very few handful of disrespectful people who do not follow the rules have no regard for regulations. We pay the price for it. So we'd like now the opportunity to perhaps help with this consultation to make sure that any changes going forward are fair and equal to all concerned. But just generally speaking, as a matter of going forward, I think this is two excellent presentations and they could be some way modified so as we have regular updates based on the presentations we had here this evening. Thank you for indulgence, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Foraszewski. I think I did see something, very useful information from the Kennel Club or was it a few, a month or two ago in respect to what you're talking about? Is that right?
The Kennel Club as a facilitator would enable us to use what they're suggesting. But because it's an unregulated industry locally, there's no governing body you can go to that says what happens in Godalming, what happens in Cranley. You're dependent on decent people who care passionately about what they do. And a group now, as a result of the consultation, are going to form a group so as they can be representative and get the message out there. So they can feed proactively into this consultation because they welcome it. They, you know, our industry sometimes can have a bad reputation because the irresponsibility of a few. So we actually welcome it. We welcome the regulations, the proposed regulations. And we welcome that we can perhaps help shape those regulations to make it fair and to actually bring some knowledge to this industry that you might not have because of it is unique rural borough. It's not like Tooting, it's not like Birmingham. It is a very different place. And therefore, I think the experts, the people who are really keen to make sure this works can help give the information they need to make it fair for everyone.
Thanks for that. And we are, obviously, we're on the forward programme there. And I don't think you're suggesting we put that on the forward programme. I know you're noting that it's mentioned in there, the public space protection orders. But we're very lucky to have councillor Andrew Bolton with as a portfolio holder for the environment. So can we just perhaps ask if he will note councillor Foraszewski's concern? There is a lot of people who are very concerned about this or certainly would like to ensure that when the decisions are made, they are informed by people who know. So if we can ask councillor Bolton to take that forward to whenever it, the need to mention that arises in his discussions with the executive to make sure they're well aware. Please ask a man who knows or a lady who knows when it comes to making those decisions, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Noted. I will liaise with councillor Foraszewski appropriately.
Thank you very much indeed. And back to Committee Forward Work Programme. My own concern, we have got at some point two thirds of the borough is affected by the alter our Thames Basin heaths and Weldon heaths bar strategies and put in place a progress assessments, impact assessments and revise our avoidance strategy so that they're compliant. I think that should come to our committee and I think it should come to our committee as soon as possible because we've got developments in Farnham, which we are going to want to grant consent to lawfully. And the same applies across, I'm sure, across the areas affected around that Weldon heaths as well. So we want to make sure that we've got strategies in place. I'm not entirely sure that the authorities at the moment, Natural England, know what they're going to do. And I think they might appreciate some help with this and certainly some input from the people who know about what's going on and what needs doing. And there's a lot of information which I am party to from various sectors which come into me, which is why I tend to know about it. And I think we need to feed it in to the Waverley system and to the system through Waverley, to the Joint Strategic Partnership Board as well, to make sure that we can, for instance, grant consent to the Wulmy developments and other developments like that, which we very much want, not necessarily the developments that are coming forward to us at the moment. But we do want developments and we want to be able to grant consent to them. So members, I would like to bring forward a report on Waverley's emerging strategy on the Thames Basin heaths and Weldon heaths, where we're going, so that we can tie that in with our local plan part two, revision of the local plan in two or three years' time, neighbourhood plans. There's a lot of things which all depend on us having that strategy in place. So Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I can confirm that as a result of reviewing the Sweetman judgment, and we have kept all members informed of where we are on that over the last couple of weeks, a couple of months actually, that we will be needing as well to make some minor refinements to the avoidance strategy for Thames Basin heaths and also to the Hainhead avoidance strategy. That will be going through the committee process shortly. We're starting to do that work now that will come through ONS first before it feeds into the executive and councils as a modification to policy. Thank you, Chairman.
So can we put that on the September? I know you may not have everything ready for that, but can we have an update? Because obviously, it's something we want to, if you haven't got the, you know, the full strategy or intentions in place by then.
Certainly give an update, yes, Chairman.
Okay, members, and Mary?
Thank you, Chairman. Just very quickly. And if we can continue on that theme with our forward working programme, what we talked about earlier, which is the tracking and monitoring of the 106 contributions and its spend.
Will that tie in with the infrastructure item that's there? Sorry, councillor Bolton?
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I just thought it might have been value for money.
Tracking of Section 106s, us all value for money.
I suspect, Chairman, it's one of those cross-cutting issues that potentially could go before either committee. But because it's so closely related to planning and development, although SIL itself, as you know, has gone through value for money. But I would like to suggest that this is more than just looking at Section 106. This is looking at the infrastructure delivery programme for the borough in conjunction with planned growth and looking at it more holistically, not just focusing on 106, but on other opportunities to secure the early support for infrastructure as much as possible, would sit with this committee. Thank you, Chairman.
Mary?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Already this evening, we've discussed some of the potential misconceptions and the errors of this not being as transparent and clear as it possibly could. And now that some of these strategic sites are well underway, some of this money will be coming forward and therefore should be seen to be spent exactly where it was agreed. So I think in the eyes of the public, we can actually demonstrate that these contributions are coming in and are being used appropriately and in accordance for how it was agreed in the first place. And I think that's essential. And I think Elizabeth again put it really, really well because it is so, it is not just closely related to, it was given birth from the planning process. This money wouldn't be available if it didn't come through a planning application. It's critical, as the two are linked, that it should remain here and it should be looked at, maybe under the heading of one or two other things. But as I say, we should have clear, this money will start to come in and start to be spent and we should have a track of it just for good housekeeping. Thank you, Chairman.
Elizabeth, is it practical for us to bring that on to our agenda as to the next meeting in some form of a reporter update? Or do we have to await the system to be in place before we can really do that successfully? Where do we stand?
Chairman, what I would suggest is that we seek to bring you a report which sets the framework for infrastructure support as we move forward now in terms of planned delivery. And a key strand of that... And a key strand of that will be section 106 and agreements that have already been concluded with some appendices which indicate where contributions have been spent, to give you the clarity that we talked about in the earlier presentation. But it will also capture progress on SIL and the gap in funding which we're trying to meet through different forms of funding. So my view is that we start with that report and it's something that can be built on going forward, it might be one of your more regular items. But I think we could probably aim for September's meeting for that because we've already started that work. Thank you, chairman.
Are you happy with that, councillor Foraszewski? That's a start. Okay, thank you very much. Wyatt?
Thank you, chairman. I totally agree that we need to monitor, control that when we've got a section 106 signed up, that we then get the money and then get spent on what we think it should be or we're expecting to spend on. My concern in this area has always been whether the departments that should be identifying the projects have got enough identified with sufficient geographic dispersion to cover wherever a developer might come up with yet another site. Does that, does monitor, would it be appropriate for this committee to monitor that there are the shovel ready schemes that your team can then pick off the shelf and use? Or is that something we should leave with the individual departments? I'm sorry, I'm struggling now in a way I don't often, where to use it. And maybe actually what we should first be doing is making sure that our own house is in order and make sure that, you know, Richard's team have identified the projects that we could use from his area so that we can then throw stones at other people saying, look, give us your lists. I'm thinking out loud rather than perhaps coherently.
Yeah, can you help?
Chairman, I think it's a bit of both because the role of the planning team, and particularly now we've got a dedicated officer, will be to improve the holistic understanding of the process from end to end. But as you quite rightly say, councillor Ramsdale, the planners can only seek the contributions of the infrastructure providers. So in terms of looking at how the money's been spent, we'll be able to confirm the projects that are being identified and tabulate them against the contributions against each permission. I think in terms of an ongoing report about work with the infrastructure providers and their ability to identify shovel ready schemes will be part of that because that's an additional part of the improvement of the system that we'll need to work with them on. Clearly, some of that work is internal to the council, but most of it is with the county council, as I said earlier. I don't know whether Annie wants to say anything about identification of play pitches and play space projects, maybe that's putting on the spot.
Thank you. No, I think it's probably something we need to look at in a wider context and perhaps that's something that's gone to one of the other overview and scrutiny committees, isn't it, the whole issue of pitch and play strategies? So I think perhaps we need to just link up with them and bring the information forward.
Okay, members, if we wrap up the forward programme, so for September, if we add the reports in respect of, what do we call it, habitat strategy, I suppose, or something like that, avoidance strategies? And possibly bringing forward, we might want to bring forward Wayhill to a future, the fairground to a future meeting. Thank you very much indeed. Okay, members, exclusion of press and public, item 14 on your agenda. We have, we're about to consider item 11, sorry, item 10, procurement of waste recycling and street planning, which is a separate follow-up report that you'll have received very recently, I'm sure you've had a look through it. It is all in exempt and the, do I have a reason for the exempt?
Yes.
Okay, it's information, yes, paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972, namely information relating to the financial or business affairs of any particular person, including the authority holding that information. That's the justification for us going into exempt now on switching off the webcast. So is that agreed, members?
Agreed.
Thank you.